Two o'clock in the afternoon. Rule call. Show Bill and Kathy not here today. Welcome, everyone. If you want to get an agenda, they're in the back of the room on the bookshelf back there. If you want to follow along. Approval of the December 11 minutes. Did everybody get a chance to review those? Were there any corrections, concerns? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Approval of today's agenda. Any questions, comments, or concerns on that? If not, entertaining a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. I just want to put one thing out before PJ gets up here. We have a short board today. So anything that we take action on for it to pass and move forward, it has to be four yes votes, just so everyone's aware. So if there was a three-two vote, it may not go anywhere today. So I just want to let you guys be aware, it has to be majority of the planning commission, not a majority of those present. So just want to make sure y'all are aware of that today, since we're missing two. All right, PJ.
Good afternoon, PJ. I'm the Director, Planning Department. Consent calendar. The following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The finding of the planning commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Number three, construction permit seventeen fourteen for Cody Shad is to bring into compliance the portion of the road construction outside of the section line right away and to satisfy conditions of approval for C S sixteen oh two. Staff recommends approval of construction permit seventeen fourteen with seven conditions. Item four, conditional use permit seventeen forty-one for Aaron Little to allow an existing structure, a restaurant, to be used as a single-family restaurant on the subject property in a general commercial district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit seventeen forty-one with eight conditions. Item five, conditional use permit seventeen forty-two for Kyle and Christina Volmer to live in a recreational vehicle while building a single-family residence on the subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit seventeen forty-two with twelve conditions. Item six, conditional use permit review sixteen thirty-three for Clinton Newley to review a single-wide mobile home to be used as a permanent single-family residence on the subject property in suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit sixteen thirty-three to the June eleventh, two thousand eighteen Planning Commission meeting to allow applicant more time to bring property into compliance. Item seven, minor plan unit development amendment seventeen twelve for Jeremy Cummings to amend the existing plan unit development to allow a gunsmithing business on the subject property in accordance with section two thirteen of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Staff recommends to continue minor plan development amendment seventeen twelve to the January eighth, two thousand eighteen Planning Commission meeting.
Would anybody like staff, would you like to pull any items off the consent calendar?
Number seven, please.
Number seven. Any of the commission want to pull any items off the consent calendar? Audience, is there anyone from the public like to pull any one of these items that we just read through off of the consent calendar, which will be, basically we'll take action on all these items with one vote? All right. Sir, do you have something? You want to pull one of these items off? All right, so then that leaves our consent calendar with items three through six and our regular agenda seven through seventeen. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, takes us to item seven.
The reason staff pulled item seven is we'd like to change the recommendation date for the continuation. Staff recommend to continue minor plan, minor plan unit development amendment seventeen twelve to the January twenty-second, two thousand eighteen Planning Commission meeting.
That's the only change.
That'd be the only change, sir.
Is the applicant here? Do they want to speak on it, just out of curiosity? All right. Please come on, come forward real quick, sir. Go ahead and state your name and...
My name's Jeremy Cummings.
Okay.
The only change was I'll be in Texas at that time.
Okay. So moving it to the twenty-second of January is good for you, though?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anything else?
No, sir.
Any questions? All right. Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else want to speak on this item? Seeing none, the recommendation is to continue it to the January twenty-second meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve PU seventeen dash twelve to the January second, January twenty-second Commission meeting.
Okay. Motion in a...
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number eight.
Good afternoon. Amy Rittering, Planner One. Agenda item number eight is, you heard this first on December fourth. This is a minor plan unit development amendment, PU seventeen ten, to amend an existing plan unit development to allow a single-wide mobile home as a dwelling unit on the subject property in accordance with section two thirteen. The applicant is not here today. Staff will be recommending approval of minor planned unit development, or minor planned unit development amendment with eleven conditions. The applicant is requesting to allow a single-wide as a dwelling unit in the existing planned unit development amendment on tract two of KWA subdivision. Just a quick refresher, so I'm not going to bore y'all with the same details from last time. Planned unit development amendment PU oh one was first approved January second of two thousand and two with the following ten conditions. They're listed there. There are only three lots that were developed out of this planned unit development, which are the blue lots right here. This one at the corner is the first tract, tract one of KWA subdivision. Tract two is the subject lot that we're discussing today, and the remaining is the unplatted The subject property contains a fourteen-by-seventy single-wide mobile home. Per D O E records, there are no building permits for this. This is to satisfy an ordinance violation, which is why you're hearing it today. Some updates from the last meeting. Staff reviewed the scanned document files for the planned unit development PU oh one oh five and found the site plan that's listed in your staff report. I don't believe I scanned that in. If you can tell, if you can see from your staff report, I think it's item, or page six of nine, that image doesn't match what we see today with the lot lines. On December eleventh, the fire administrator did contact staff regarding the subject property and putting in a F, I'm sorry, NFPA thirteen D sprinkler system. Unfortunately, the fire administrator could not make it to a, conduct a site visit based on the fire that was happening down in Castle. So he recommended that Western State's Fire Protection come out and conduct a site visit, which they did on December thirteenth. They quoted that the total project would be forty-three hundred dollars, assuming that the one-inch water supply was adequate for the fire suppression system. Later, I did receive an email stating that that was not an adequate water supply and that they would need two hydraulic lines to put that in. So that's no longer a feasible option. Based on the water moratorium that's placed on that lot, he would have to expand the water lines. It would get significantly more expensive to put it in for that single-wide. During the site visit, the applicant made mention that there were, that there was a well on the property. So I did a little digging to see what well there was. There's two. One was drilled in nineteen eighty-seven, and then there was another one drilled in ninety-seven. Both of these wells only produce three gallons per minute. There is one spigot that does go through to his property, which is how he was plotted through the city of Rapid City based on that water source. He does not get any well, any well water from that. When you turn this out, it does not produce any well water coming out of that. So that's also not a viable water source for him to use to try and put a suppression system in. Yeah, based on this water information, staff is unsure if their sprinkler system is even feasible, based on the water moratorium that's placed on this lot. Also, with the water pressure issues that are going on with his current system, I'm at a loss of what kind of system we can put in there. I did receive an additional email from our emergency management deputy director that said that you could put a fire extinguisher inside the home, but that would only take care of it if somebody was there. So staff will be recommending the approval of the minor planned unit development to allow the single-wide on that existing lot.
Any questions for staff?
Do we know when the mobile home was put on the lot?
It was put on in twenty... We caught wind of it in December of twenty sixteen from Department of Equalization. That's when it was put on the tax roll at that point. The lot was created in twenty fourteen, the end of twenty fourteen, December of twenty fourteen.
So it's sometime between twenty fourteen and twenty sixteen. They planted the lot, but didn't change the planned unit development to allow for the mobile home on the lot that it was just placed on there?
Correct. So the way that the planned unit development is written, it's a dwelling, there's fifty-one dwelling units allowed. A dwelling unit does not include anything that's sized under the twenty-by-twenty per our ordinance, which is a living space, which is why we're hearing this like you would any other single-wide in the county. It's essentially a conditional use permit to allow a living space under the twenty-by-twenty. However, it's a planned unit development, so we have to do a minor amendment.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Amy, so are you recommending approval of this and deleting condition four?
We can't delete condition four because it's a minor amendment, and that would affect the whole planned unit development. We still have to go through a major amendment in order to change that, and we, staff would really love to do that. It kind of has to come, does it necessarily have to come as...
Could we recommend that?
Yeah, I would love it if y'all would recommend that, so we can do that.
So if we approve this as written, if we approve it as written, the person is going to be in violation, correct? Because he can install a system that's being required. Is that what I understand?
Can I clarify, Amy, since we had a conversation?
Yes.
I think all of them are going to be in violation, because none of them...
Every single unit is in violation.
None of them have a fire suppression system.
Okay.
So either way, it probably does need to be overhauled, or at least looked at, so...
Then we'll go through a major amendment.
Yeah, but that would have to come from us as a, as a recommendation.
Correct. So you could approve this with the recommendation that staff would conduct a major review, or that you would require staff to conduct a major review of planned unit development oh one oh five?
PJ, you look like you want to say something.
No, yeah. Or you could deny without prejudice, and we can convert this into a major amendment.
Or that is option B that could be done as well.
Would staff prefer?
Major amendment. It's an investment of our time to fix a bigger problem. We'll be back with this again next couple of years, I know, so we might as well just take care of it now.
So is your preference that we deny without prejudice, or just make your recommendation to do the major amendment?
If you deny without prejudice, maybe with the recommendation to convert it into a major amendment. But knowing that the applicant's not going to be responsible for the additional fee on the, on the application, because we're not asking the applicant to do this.
Right.
And then staff would have to do the certified mailings also.
Okay.
But staff has talked about it, and it would be an investment of our time, especially with the water changes out in this area.
As I say, there's way more behind this, too. All that water stuff, that's just off of radar here, roll.
This is beyond a single-wide, yes.
So, yes.
So if we deny without prejudice, then we won't have to have the guy come to the commission and ask to have the fees waived and all that kind of stuff, right?
No, he's already paid to have, for the minor amendment and paid for the mailings.
No, but I mean for, okay.
Yep. We would just roll it into the major.
The major.
Yeah. Gotcha. Any further questions for staff? Anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none. If there's no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion either for the current recommendation or for what we just talked about.
I'll make the motion to deny plan unit, the minor planned unit development amendment PU seventeen dash ten without prejudice. And then is the request for staff to review the major planned unit development a second, a separate item, or can that be done in the same motion?
It'd be okay if you put it together.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Second.
That'll be my motion, then.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Takes us to item number nine.
That is awesome. So item number nine is a conditional use permit review CU seventeen dash thirty-nine. This was last for November thirteenth. This is to review an office building on the subject property to serve Colonial Pine Hill Sanitary District in a suburban residential district. The reason for this review is to make sure that you got the conditions were appropriate and being met, and to make sure that the vacation and the relocation of the septic easements were also met. So I'm just going to quickly go through this with you guys. Staff will be recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU seventeen dash thirty-nine with eleven conditions. This was first approved November thirteenth, twenty seventeen, by the Planning Commission with the following nine conditions. The current conditions on the lot, it's half of an acre in a suburban residential district, and the lot still only contains a fire hydrant and a mailbox. It is under construction at this current point, so there's still only things there. On May twenty-second, twenty seventeen, the applicant applied and was approved for a new onsite wastewater treatment system C I O S W seventeen dash zero-two-eight-eight with the city of Rapid City's Public Works Department. During the month of September, staff received several phone calls from representatives from Colonial Pine Hill Sanitary District regarding the subject property and the building permit process, and how to obtain an office building for Colonial Pine Hill Sanitary District. Staff informed the applicant that they needed to apply for conditional use permit because of the suburban residential zoning districts. On October fifth, conditional use permit was applied for. During the interdepartmental review process, staff was brought to the, it was brought to staff's attention that the plat contained the reserved drain field areas, and those notes needed to be vacated. On November thirteenth, staff recommended continue, recommended to continue conditional use permit CU seventeen thirty-nine. However, during the later portion of the Planning Commission meeting, we approved, or the Planning Commission approved CU seventeen thirty-nine with nine conditions. There were several key elements missing from that staff report. Consider the considerations for the conditional use permit request, parking lot requirements, and the signing of the statement of understanding. So those are going to be addressed just now, which is why I'm going through the long, lengthy review with you guys. It's statute, so bear with me. I'll try and go through it quick. Updates, on November fourteenth, staff received documentation from the Register of Deeds Office indicating that an easement for a future drain field area was conducted, or was done and filed. On November sixteenth, staff received the later document for the vacation of the drain field easement. So those two drain fields have now been created, which look like, oh, I didn't update it, sorry. That's the documentation in your staff report, and also with the, the larger document is in your, the back of your staff report. Also, today's staff received an email stating that there were going to be three staff members utilizing the space, which makes a minimum of five parking spaces a requirement for this subject property. Considerations for conditional use permits. The zoning ordinance lists five factors that a planning commission may consider in their review of a conditional use permit application. They are as follows. The effects upon the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity for the uses already permitted and upon the property values within the immediate vicinity. It appears that this conditional use permit would affect those negatively. The effects upon the normal and orderly developments and improvements of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. This conditional use permit actually is benefiting this neighborhood, as it's a sanitary district office building. Utilities and roads, going again, this is a utility that will be helping this neighborhood development. Number four is definitely the key one of this. Off-street parking, looking at section three-ten, A nine dash B for minimum off-street parking requirements, there is one per three hundred square feet of usable floor area, plus two per each three employees. So the, the building permit that I received showed one thousand four hundred and fourteen square feet. However, the usable office space was only eight hundred and thirty-eight square feet with an attached two-car garage. So when you do the calculations for that, there needs to be three parking spaces, plus two per each employee, making it five. So staff will be recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit with the following eleven conditions. The additions for the parking and the signed statement of understanding were included in that list from the nine.
All right. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Rich.
Has the applicant submitted all of the information requested by the county? And are you guys okay with everything that they've submitted?
Yes.
Okay. No further questions.
All right. Any other members have any questions for staff? All right. Any audience members like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none. Current recommendation is approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU seventeen thirty-nine with the following eleven conditions. Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval of C U P seventeen thirty-nine with eleven conditions for staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to item ten.
PJ, I'm the Director, Planning Department. The staff member that wrote the staff reports out today, so be filling in. Item ten is minor plan unit development seventeen eleven to amend the existing Sheridan Lake Highlands Plan Unit Development to reduce the minimum required setback from twenty-five feet to five feet on the east and west property lines in order to build a detached garage. The applicant is Matt and Juliana Arena, and the size of the acre is three-point-zero-two acres. Currently, it's a planned unit development oh five fourteen, and the access is off of Dry Sage Lane, and it is located in the Sheridan Lake Highlands Road District. The lot contains a single-family residence, which was permitted in two thousand and sixteen, and onsite wastewater treatment system, permitted for construction in two thousand and sixteen with an operating permit issued in two thousand and sixteen as well. There is no special flood hazard area on the, on the property. The planned unit development was approved by the Board of Commissioners in October of two thousand and five and was reviewed in two thousand and nine in May and approved with fourteen conditions. Currently, the setbacks for the planned unit development are twenty-five feet from all property lines, and the applicant is requesting to go down considerably down to five feet on the east and west. Upon review by the staff, we looked at the plat of this property, and there is an eight-foot minor drainage utility easement which trumps the applicant's request for five feet. The applicant is willing and prepared to adjust to an eight-foot setback prior, instead of the twenty-five, but the applicant still does not know where on the property they want to put the detached garage. That's one of the things staff would like to know on this. There have been some letters of, no letters of support, but letters against this that have come in from the road district. And during the interdepartmental review, the Rapid City Engineering Department, because this is located just, just inside the three-mile planning jurisdiction for Rapid City, just made mention of some of their requirements, which are very similar to ours if it was zoned suburban residential, but because it is zoned to planned unit development, regular zoning restrictions don't apply. Sheridan Lake Highlands Road District did mention that they, they do not agree with this request, and also said this is one of the last lots to be developed in the area, and they're looking for more harmony and continuity in their planned unit development. I'm not sure if anybody from the road district is in the audience today. As far as staff analysis, again, the applicant has looked into reduce the minimum required setback from twenty-five feet to five feet, but then has amended it to eight feet because of the existing minor drainage and utility easement. The applicant does state that because of topography on the subject property, and here's some pictures of the current existing house. Access, that's the access off of Sienna Meadows Lane, so of course they're not using that. This is twenty-foot contour intervals in the brown, and then this is two-foot contour intervals, and roughly, I'd say here is where the existing house is. We don't get a lot of minor or major amendments for this area. If you do remember recently, this subdivision was part of a, of a major subdivision and another planned unit development just south for Ryan Kelly, which has been approved and recorded with the Register of Deeds. But other than that, staff would recommend approval of minor planned unit development. However, I have a couple of changes. I'd like to add a condition. So currently, there's five conditions that were recommended. Staff would like to add a sixth condition that states that the applicant supplied the Planning Department Director with an as-built site plan upon completion to ascertain that the detached garage was constructed per building permit proposed site plan. So we're just checking up to make sure it was done properly. So staff would change the recommendation to approval of minor planned unit development seventeen eleven with six conditions.
Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Does this existing home have an attached garage?
I believe so, yes.
So this is additional garage storage, is what they want? Do other homes in this area have additional detached garages?
There's one just to the southeast there, as you can see, the gray one. Appears to have one.
Okay, so it's not unusual in this neighborhood for people to have additional structures?
It's not unusual. The only thing that's unusual is the request for the setback change. That's the only difference.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Ron.
For the sake of the applicant, I'm thinking about no on this. Still, you do have the opportunity to withdraw this and run it back around again next time when it's a full board, because if I vote no, it only takes one more no vote to turn this down. But you can have the opportunity to withdraw it if you want to, or you take the chance.
Any further questions for staff? Are there any members in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? All right, sir, come forward and state your name.
Hello. My name's Matthew Arena. I'm the homeowner.
All right, sir.
So I just have a couple of comments. The reason I started this process is because I want to put a detached garage onsite. I think almost every house in the neighborhood has a detached garage. I know that was one of the questions. I originally came into the, came into this, and they said that you could go to a minimum of five feet, and now it's been adjusted to eight feet, which is fine. But I didn't know where I was going to put it, because depending on the space, the limitations of space depends on the design of how I'm going to do the two- or three-car garage. The reason I'm doing it is my mother-in-law's decided to move in with us after her husband passed away, and so I need to have a car space for her. One of the comments that was made was, it was unclear as to where we're planning on putting it. I initially wanted to put it on the west side of the property, but in looking at it and measuring it, even with the, if you guys were to approve the setbacks, it's too close to my neighbor's house on that side. So now we're looking at doing it, and my goal is to keep it as tight to the house as possible and away from the neighbor's house as far as possible. So we're looking at that west corner, the front west corner of the house, and doing it right there. And then the only other comment I would have is, I know that doing the setbacks is unusual, but I'm one of the only people in the neighborhood that have a giant cul-de-sac in the middle of my front yard, so it's a little difficult.
I have a question for you. Who told you that you could move it to five foot? You made mention that someone told you...
It was at the department here. When I came in, I said, what can I go down to? And the answer was that you could go down to five feet. It was the woman, and I don't know what her name is.
They say you could, or they said you could request or ask if you can have an adjustment?
Oh, they said you can ask. And I said, and she said, you know, the best thing to do is just ask for it, and then if it has to be less than that, and it probably could be less than that, and measuring, I don't know that I need eight feet, I probably could go even further away from the line than that and still be okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Another question is, do you know if there's anybody else who actually is closer than the normal setbacks?
There are some that look like they might be, but I, I mean, I don't know how I would know that. They look that way, but I don't know.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Rich.
Mr. Mr. Aren, is it Arena?
Arena.
Okay. My concern is you not knowing exactly what you want to do. I mean, if you come forward and you have a garage kind of laid out, and you've talked to your neighbor about it, and they're cool with it, and you come in and ask for this different scenario for me, if, but if, as is, you're coming in and you're asking for, you know, I want the setbacks on either side of my property for the entire, you know, sides of my property reduced way down, which really opens that way up. So, it's not a, it's not a specific request. For me, it's, it's you're asking to change the entire thing for, for the, for that piece of property. It also looks like you have a, I realize you want to keep it close to your house, but you do have other large portions of your property that are not adjacent to the property lines that it looks like you could potentially build a detached garage on, maybe across the cul-de-sac, something like that. So, I guess for me, I'd like to see more of a specific plan before the requests of the entire subdivision via the homeowners association would be ignored based on the current rules of the planned unit development. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I mean, the only reason that I didn't have a plan is because depending on what I'm allowed to do. For one, putting it on the far side of the property in the northeast, she's 74 years old, that's a long walk to try to get to her car. I mean, I guess I could do the walk, but that's a far, it's quite a jock to get to that part of the property. And you're right, it's not very specific, but when I came to the department initially, I asked them, you know, it was kind of seemed like it was best to find out what your options are and then go and get an architect to design. But my plan is just right on that east corner, east front corners to put a three-car garage, basically, a two-door and a one-door, probably 30 by 40.
On the east corner?
Yeah.
Like down here.
So, I'm planning on doing it right here like that.
And do you know how close you would be to the property line then?
That'd be my question.
It's, I, what I did was I went and estimated roughly where I think, based on the plot, where I think the line is, and I tried to come in 25 feet, and it looks like it's really close to fitting. If I could get a little wiggle room, it'd probably make it easier just to be safe, but...
You should have a plot plan of your, of your house when you purchased your house.
I do.
I'm wondering if, would you be willing to bring this back forth, back in front of the commission, kind of with a more specific plan?
Absolutely.
I guess I'd like to see that, to consider that, but at this point, I'm a no vote for reducing this down from 25 feet to 5 feet, or 8 feet for that matter, for the entire length of your lot.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind. I can go and get plans, and now that we've kind of figured a lot of this out, I can get plans and bring those forward. That's not a problem, and show exactly what I'm planning to do.
Based on what you just showed, it roughly looks like that area could be about 46 feet.
This is off of Rapid Map.
Right, I get it, I get it. It's not exact. It's a guesstimate, but where you put the X on, and the rough guesstimate shows that you would actually be off, off that property line. You'd meet what you need, so...
Well, yeah, the lines are shifted to the east, but yes.
I get it. But I'm also on the same line. I'd prefer to see something. I don't like to say, "Yeah, you can have kind of carte blanche do it", and then we get stuck with something that we, that's not what we had the intent, because you told us one thing, you changed your mind, and then you did something else.
Okay.
So, all right.
So, what would be the next steps? What can I do from here?
Well, first, it depends on our action here, depending on whether we follow the recommendation or there's a different motion. And then after that motion is voted upon, that would determine what would happen next. And PJ, you can talk to PJ based on what the motion is after we get done voting on it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further questions, PJ?
No, just waiting up here for the motion.
All right. If you don't have anything else, you're welcome to sit down. I want to see if somebody else from the audience.
I have a quick question.
Oh, sorry, Sonny has a question.
How much, how much time would you like to have to come up with your plan?
I'm sorry?
To come up with a plan for where your garage might go, how much time do you think you'd need?
Do I need to have like an architectural designed plan? Because I don't, that depends on the architect and how long it'll take them to do it.
Not that detail, but, but where it would go in respect to the, to the setbacks.
Measurements and everything?
Because we may put this out to one of the future meetings, and we can put it out further if you need it to.
No, I mean, do you guys meet once a month? Is that correct?
Twice.
Twice a month?
Next meeting's in two weeks. Jerry, what's the next meeting, actually?
January 8.
January 8, so...
That would be fine.
That's two weeks.
That's three weeks. Three weeks would be fine. I'm sure I could, because I mean, we're making a lot of progress just in figuring it out right now anyways, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience member like to speak on this item? Seeing none. The recommendation is to approve the minor PUD 1711 with the following six conditions. However, with our discussion, is there any...
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Rich.
And it's for staff. PJ, if we deny without prejudice, will the applicant, the fees be waived on his resubmital of this?
The application fee would, but the advertising fee would not. Originally, orig, the, sorry, the mailings, the public mailings, those fees are not waived. Originally, the applicant looked at 5 feet because of the plat then had to go to 8, so they're actually increasing what they originally asked for. You could continue it if we're just waiting for a site plan.
Let's do that.
To come back, because even if it's sent out to the public, all it'd be saying is, "I'm not going to go 5, I'm going to go 8". So, it's not like we're going to say, "We're going to go 1" when originally I said 5, so it's less than they originally wanted.
Gotcha. All right. Any further questions? With that said, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue minor planned unit development PU 17-11 to January 8, Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Takes us to item number 11.
Item 11 is conditional use permit 1743 to allow recreational resort or area or glamping campground on a subject property in the general agriculture district. The applicant is UnderCanvas Incorporated. Jeremy Budge is the applicant. Capstone Properties LLC is the agent. The landowner, applicant, and agent are all in the audience today if you have any questions. The subject property is 160.23 acres. That's outlined in the dark red, and the boulder red is actually the subject property, which is just around 80 acres, which has the big, which has the X on it just for show right now. So, to get into it, the applicant's requesting conditional use permit to allow for recreational resort area or glamping camp on the subject property, which would include 80 tents, 18 teepees, which would be adjacent to the, some of the existing tents but used for children, two communal bathroom facilities with sinks and showers, onsite management office, a lobby tent, an outdoor dining area, fire pits, bath cabins, laundry facility, a yoga deck, and commercial kitchen. For those who aren't familiar, glamping is commonly known as the term to describe luxury or glamorous camping. The applicant's request also includes a 25-foot wide looped and cul-de-sac roadways, over 100 parking spaces, and 8-foot wide cart paths. Now, the site plan we're looking at here, we'll just go through it real quick. So, this area is existing Presidio Ranch Road, right there with the long line. The, the red lots are the proposed sites for the tents, and there's different styles of tents that they're doing. This would be the yoga deck over here on the west, the lobby tent, management tent, and then over here about in the center, about 6 o'clock is the laundry and housekeeping. The little blue squares or rectangles, those are the proposed parking area, and there's over 120 shown here. The applicant would actually need to do more than that. And the red areas, this one here, it looks kind of like a Christmas tree, these are the cart paths, which will be used by staff for maintenance vehicles and golf carts only. So, this is how they would get people back and forth, and those would be 8 foot, 8 feet wide. Again, the subject property is 160.23 acres. It's .22 miles south of the town of Keystone, and access is off of Presidio Ranch Road. The proposed area would be just over 80 acres, would take the same access south through the town of Keystone, across two existing public access easements, and across Forest Service easement, which was plotted via Book 179, page 882, which currently allows to grantee Capstone Properties, which is the landowner access. It does not allow under Canvas at this time access across Forest Service. This has been the most difficult part of this process, and coming up with this conditional use permit is getting hold of Forest Service for comment. Usually, we get comments back pretty quick, but it's been over five, six weeks, and we haven't heard back from the Forest Service about access across their property or changing the name. However, in that agreement, they do allow a transfer with notification to the Forest Service, but they don't, but another condition, they do not allow commercial use of that access unless you are to improve the roads and help with the cost of the Forest Service. In talking with the applicant and the agent, they have indicated that there is an agreement in place, a document that exists, that upon sale of the property, the access through the Forest Service would transfer to the new owner. I haven't seen that. We were hoping to get something from the Forest Service, but staff put it in as a condition that it is something that needs to be done to gain legal access prior to operation. So, that's one way that we were able to cover it. The applicant has indicated that recreational resort area will be used as, for guests between March and November of each year. For purposes of the staff report, we're going to use the word temporary on some of the tents, because tents have come up a lot in the last few months. These are just pictures of some of the tents they have in Zion under Canvas, and Zion is in Utah, I believe. They also submitted a California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection certificate for the tent canvas material that they used, and I'm sure when they come up, they can definitely talk to you a little bit more about the canvas that they use. They are looking for temporary use. They are looking to go up and take them back down. And for purposes of this staff report, at this time, and this conditional use permit temporary will be between February and December of every year, so one month prior and one month after their indicated operational time. And speaking with the applicant just today, the applicant will be fine with that, knowing that this is a conditional use permit, and after maybe a year or so of operation, that that could be requested via amendment. This was routed through the interdepartmental review. The county fire administrator had about three pages of comments. A lot of it is that they talked with Forest Service, they talked with state wildland fire, fire service, and they have done all of that. They got a free survey of their property for fire mitigation. That report is not out yet, because almost everybody they've talked to is on the existing fire to the south of us, and it has been for a week or so. They are looking to have, asking them to include turnarounds for the emergency vehicles if they do need to gain access down to the property, and that's shown on page 6 of 16 of the staff report. They did request that there be a minimum number of first aid kits on the property. Smoking is addressed as well. That's on page 9 of 16, under the fire coordinator's comments. Emergency management or 911 was routed as well. Their main concern was actually the namings of the road, the naming of the road, and also the numbering of the cabins, so that if there was an emergency, the fire, the emergency vehicle that would come in would be able to find the location as quickly as possible. It's hard to see, but each one of these little red proposed site, tent sites does have a number on them. Whether those would be the actual numbers when this was done, we don't know, but it looks like that the applicants have already thought ahead about that and have put numbers on all the cabins. Again, we have not heard from the US Forest Service. This was also routed through the South Dakota Department of Environmental Natural Resources. Because this is a commercial operation, they have to look at the septic system, and also they look at the wells. So, they're working with Scott Hippel as far as the septic, and they just wanted to indicate that water rights would be needed for the well, and that this process could take two to three months to complete if there are no issues, and maybe possibly as long as six to eight months if possible, or if needed. We also sent this as a courtesy through the town of, to the finance officer in town of Keystone, because they'd be gaining access through that town and probably getting supplies, and people be going in and out. They did, they did not submit any comments relative to this request. With the conditional use permit, there are five criteria by state law that need to be considered. First item is that the effect upon use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity for use is already permitted and upon property values within the immediate vicinity. This conditional use permit could affect the use and enjoyment of other properties in immediate vicinity due to increased traffic and potential noise. However, the applicant indicated that they will always have staff onsite, and that could possibly help with the mitigation of that. And also, the use of the carts instead of using vehicles all the time to get around on the camp, on the campsite would also be a benefit. The subject property has US Forest Service on three sides, and its closest residential unit is over .3 miles to the north of the remaining, to the north of the property, trying to get a better picture for you here. Nope, not going to have it. Okay. And staff cannot predict the effect that the request will have on the property values within the immediate vicinity. Item B, the effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. The proposed use should have minimal effect on the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding vacant property in the area. The subject property again is located, is surrounded on three sides by Forest Service with the closest residential unit .3 miles away, and the remaining adjacent property to the south is owned by Rushmore Resort and Camping Campground Incorporated. So, again, a similar type use. Item C, the utilities, access road, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. Access to the property is provided by way of easements previously mentioned. Upon entering the property, Presidio Ranch Road continues on through the subject property and terminates approximately .33 miles to the south on property owned by Rushmore Resort, Ranch, and Campground LLC, or Incorporated, excuse me. And as of the staff report, the applicant is in the process of drilling test wells and secure a water source on the property, as indicated through the Department of Natural, Environmental Natural Resources. Item D, that the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. As shown in the, in the site plan, the applicant indicated over 120 parking spaces. Per section 310 of Pennington County zoning ordinance, parking spaces need to be one per bedroom, I'm sorry, excuse me, yeah, one parking space per bedroom and two parking spaces for every three employees. And discussing this with the, the applicant, they're looking to have 25 to 30 employees, but only have probably a maximum of about 15 at a time, with some of them being bussed in by way of a van. With the known 120 parking spaces, the 80 proposed tents, and the 18 teepees, staff would be recommending that they increase their parking spaces by 10 to an estimated 130 parking spaces, which the applicant, when we talked with him last week, didn't have any concern with. It appears that the ample space for parking on the subject property can be provided. And last item that we have to consider, that the measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting. The proposed conditional use by its very nature should have limited odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibrations, and intrusive lighting. In conclusion, the applicants have submitted a detailed information packet regarding the operation for the overall plan for the sites. There are other recreational resorts in Pennington County, but this is the first of its kind in use scope and scale. The applicant's use of the proposed recreational resort appears to be in harmony with the surrounding land use, and as of the staff report, staff has not received any calls or letters of complaint regarding the applicant's request. What's different, what's going to be different in this one is one of our conditions, instead of having a year review, staff will be asking for a six-month review, so we can actually review this when the camp is in operation, because they are looking to get started as soon as possible in 2018. With that, staff would recommend approval of conditional use permit 1743 with 27 conditions.
Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Lori.
I have to note that I will recuse myself from this item, because my son works for UnderCanvas.
So, that would make a vote, four yeses to pass.
It would have to be four yeses to pass, just so the audience is aware. Any further questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Rich.
Camping resorts in Pennington County are, are approved in what zoning categories?
They could be in all.
And are they always a conditional use permit in all?
Under specialty resorts, recreational use areas, and just like vacation homes, yeah, except for planned unit developments. But you're not going to find them in heavy industrial, light industrial.
Okay. Yeah, my first question was, is why not just move this to a zoning category or request a zoning change to permit that? But you're saying that it would be a CUP regardless of the zoning category?
They could change it to a planned unit development, which staff did discuss with the applicant. They're looking to keep it as general agriculture, which is the least restrictive of any of our zoning ordinances, and do it through a conditional use permit. They actually have more freedom to make adjustments as needed with that, whereas a planned unit development, every change is going to cost you $300 to $400.
Understood. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Any audience members like to speak on this item? I see none. Oh.
I'll just introduce myself. I'm Jeremy Budge.
Come forward and go ahead and tell us your name.
I'm Jeremy Budge, Director of Development for Under Canvas, and just wanted to introduce myself and answer any questions if you had them.
All right. Any questions for Jeremy? Thank you very much, Jeremy.
Also, I did talk with Jack Rot, who's our neighbor, and he said that he would like to be in the loop as far as evacuate, emergency evacuation and fire mitigation plans as we develop those further, and I've agreed to do that.
Okay. Awesome. Any other audience members like to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none. Current recommendations to approve, CU 17-43 with the following 27 conditions. Would entertain a motion as such?
Some moves.
Second that.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number 12.
Good afternoon. Brittany Molitor, Environmental Planning Supervisor. Item number 12 is ordinance amendment OA 1702 to amend Section 103 definitions, Section 205B 17, General Agriculture District, Section 212B 12, Heavy Industrial District, Section 507B Mining Permits, and Section 511 Fees, and to add Section 320 Mining Operation to the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance. Back in April of 2016, the Board of Commissioners did approve the formation of a committee to review construction permits, mining permits, and alternative energy ordinances in those sections of the Pennington County's zoning ordinances, and for the committee to propose a possible ordinance amendment. The mining committee did meet for several months, and during that time, they wrote sections of the ordinance pertaining to mining. The biggest change in here is that we actually changed it to its own section, 320, instead of having it under 507. So with that, I don't know how you want me to proceed to start.
That's okay. Everyone got a chance to read through the mining ordinance that has been worked on for several months. I was on that committee as well, along with Deb Hadcock, just for references. There are some members in the audience that were actually on that committee as well, or there as, as public and gave a lot of input. So first and foremost, are there any questions?
My, my question would be on the process of addressing questions and implementation into this, into the, into the ordinances as well. I know that in the past, we've taken these one at a time. Or are we going to summarize them and send them back to the committee and ask for a revised draft? I guess understanding the process would be important.
Right. That's a good point and a good question. I will tell you that after the court ruling just recently, that may throw a little, a bit of information out there that we weren't expecting, and it might be wise to at least continue it and discuss with legal, because tell me, correct me if I'm wrong, Brittany, we haven't been, the planning department hasn't talked to legal at all since the court ruling, Supreme Court ruling, correct?
We haven't discussed the court ruling with legal, no.
Right. So we don't even know how that affect, affects or applies, or how it might even change any of this, just depending on the wording of that ruling. So I received, or we should have all received today, some fresh information that did take that into account, but not have, being able to review it and seeing it. I don't know if I would be comfortable voting one way to say yes or no to this. I'm kind of leaning to where I want it to go for, you know, I want to continue it to kind of ask some questions via email. We can kind of email through. I don't want to keep the public from being able to have a public input today, though, since there are members in the public that were part of this, and they may have some further input since the, since the court ruling and since the final draft came out. So that's kind of where I'm leaning for today. I'm not saying that that has to be it, because if everybody else says they want to move forward, that's how it is. But I would like to look at it and I think address some of the specific concerns. In general, I don't know if there's a lot of major concerns, except for what has been sent to us, but I don't know from the board. Y'all have a lot of major concerns from the board that came through.
There are the minor, minor ones from, that Kathy had sent out, but other than that, I, I don't believe that there's a lot of specifics. Procedure-wise, though, there's two hearings.
Pardon?
Procedure-wise, though, there's two hearings.
One in front of the planning commission, and then two in front of the Board of Commissioners, correct?
Okay.
So technically, we, if we pass it as is, it could go before them, and it would be two before them. But it might be wise to at least get public input today and still continue it so that we can find out the implications from talking to a legal state attorney and see if it changes anything, you know, from the legal side of things. Some of it may not, no longer be applicable. I don't know. So we could be hashing out some stuff and voting on stuff that doesn't even apply anymore. That's my thought.
Has the state's attorney's office had a chance to cross-check that information or no?
We have not had a chance to sit down and go over anything with the state's attorney's office at this time. And we did receive another, said, some other suggested changes this morning from another citizen, and then we did receive some other suggested changes last week, and then in addition to Kathy's comments. So we've had quite a few proposed changes and suggestions in the past few days.
I know that doesn't answer your question specifically, but I think there's a lot of, things have changed in the last week since this was sent out to us and, and we had a chance to review it.
Okay.
Any further questions for staff? Nope. I believe there's going to be some audience members that would like to speak on this behalf, so if, go ahead, sir. Come forward. He was raising his hand in the back.
My name is John Hawkins. I'm a resident of Rochester, and I have two things to say, basically. One is, I would encourage the commission to continue the efforts of updating ordinances to include hard rock mining. And along with that, I'd like to see the moratorium on mining continued until such a time as the ordinances are revised. Secondly, I have lots of comments on the proposed sand and gravel ordinance changes here, and I would rather than bore everyone with every one of them right now, I would gladly work with the committee and address those. My biggest concern is that there has not been any consideration of historical, cultural, religious, tribal considerations in the areas where these mines are potentially going to be located. So I would gladly entertain any questions based on my comments, but that's, that's the heart of what I've got to say.
Any questions for John?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Come on up.
My name is Dwayne Abata. I'm a resident of Pennington County, and I sat on that committee that Travis was talking about, a few other people also represented in the audience here. It was a lot of work. Appreciate the work and salute the, everyone else, not myself, who participated in that. I have a number of changes, significant changes, that I'd like to bring before you. And I, I thought this was to be a, three readings at the planning commission, but apparently it's not. It's just, there's just one reading here and then two at the commissioners'. So I thought this thing was to continue for three more sessions. I can mail these into you, and then I don't have to bore you with all the details, but I do want to mention three or four very important matters here that, they surprised me when they came out in, in print. And on the last day, I guess, of the meeting, I was, I was surprised that they were put in here. The first deals with the ability to obtain a mining permit on agriculturally zoned lands or lands that, land is zoned agriculture. I was absolutely surprised about this, and I understand that this may be a current practice historically, but it seems to me that you would want to have all the land zoned heavy industrial for taxation purposes, rather than allow a mining company or a mining entity to move into agricultural land at will. And I know the argument is that mining is temporary and that once the land is reclaimed, it moves back into agricultural, but the definition of temporary is, is unknown. I know of mines in the Upper Peninsula of Michigan that were put in at the turn of the century, and you might call them still temporary, even though the mining companies have long gone bankrupt and long left ugly holes and scars in, in the ground. So either define temporary, we, we need to reword this, or let's get off agricultural land and have land zoned first, heavy industrial before mining moves into the area. And I do, an alternative wording might be if, if you want to continue to do this, if you have a, a land that's zoned heavy industrial to move into agricultural land, which is adjacent to heavy industrial, what I'm trying to do is protect the adjacent property owners. If you don't allow this, an individual can buy land that's zoned agricultural, and right next door, agricultural all of a sudden becomes heavy industrial. And that's a, a big concern of mine. So that's the first item, and I'm not going to go into the details. My arguments, I've given you what I've given you, and I will submit this, an email through whoever you want me to send it to. The next item is, these mining permits are, are significant. They are not, I don't, I don't mean to say that your actions here today are insignificant, but there, there are a lot of actions that don't have to go before the county commissioners. We want to keep their agenda on the more important matters. I believe mining permits is a very important matter. So page five, paragraph E2, we talk, talk about, entitled a public hearing, if you have it in front of you. This allows the planning commission to, to essentially grant that mining permit and allow a mining company or mining entity to come in and do what they, start, start a mining entity. And I believe this is so important, and the public ought to have their elected officials talk, discuss the mining permit applications and granting of mining permits. And I would hope that this committee, or this commission would allow that, actions to, to move before the county commission rather than the planning commission, not to take any importance away from this very important body, of course. Another important item was actually pointed out by one of you, is the performance bond. One can start a mine with absolutely minimal amount of performance bond. Basically, it's a bond that says, if I'm a mining company and I go out of business, then there's still money there to reclaim the land or take care of any difficulties that may have happened. And my understanding is that performance bonds can actually be, be had at the local banks. All you have to do is show that you have something to put forth, and the bank will, will bond out the money. The bonds are very small, and historically, I believe the last number I heard was $20,000 for any mining site run by a company throughout the entire state. That, I'm sorry, that's not site-specific. That means that if I'm a mining operation, I have to put down $20,000 for all the mines that I want to operate. Not 20 times all the mines, but just 20, $20,000, and that's insignificant when it comes to reclaiming land. That has to be really looked at in much greater detail. That's the, under the performance bond. And the last is of my important comments, and I've got pages and pages of here. Page 14, section, paragraph 12, it states that only an individual living within a 300-foot or living outside of the 300-foot permit limit from any, has any input to the renewal process. And I, I don't believe that that's appropriate. It seems to me that people that are living further away than that, I'm not sure if I'm reading that correct or not, but people ought to have the right to, to have a say in the renewal process of the mining permit. I have, oh, about, oh, five or six, I don't know, seven or eight additional changes. Most of them are editorial, and I'll just submit this email. And you said, Travis, this was going to come before you again, is that correct?
I, I can't tell you that it's for sure going to come before us again. What I'm, what I'm saying is, I would like to see us take in all the information we're getting today, continue it to the next meeting at a minimum, and, and go forward. I can't tell you that that's what's going to happen. Whenever we have our discussion up here, that's what I am going to, you know, try to convince everybody up here to do, but.
I think it's incredibly important, particularly since we got, we're in the, we're in the middle of something. Hopefully, we're at the end, but I think we're in the middle of something that has cost us, the county taxpayers, the residents, et cetera, close to a half a million dollars, if not more than that, when you add up judicial time and legal fees, and what our residents have pooled together with $100 and $200 and, and $50 donations. We're upwards, close to a half a million dollars, and we want to avoid that in, in the future. That's been very painful, agonizing, and let's make sure, try all we can so that doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Dwayne, oh, did somebody have a question?
I just said thank you, and if you'd send, I suspect.
To Jerry? Did send him you?
Your comments. I'd like you to see it on paper.
Certainly. Okay, to, to who now?
Process it much better.
Okay, I'll get it to you. Thank you. Anything else?
Any other questions for Dwayne? All right. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I'm Gina Parkhurst. I was not an official committee member, but I was able to sit down on some of the meetings, and I just want to say thank you to the staff and the committee members who did a really great job of listening to public members and accepting our input outside of the meetings as well via written format. And I just appreciate the way the process has gone. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience members like to?
Does it matter which?
Doesn't matter which.
Nancy Hilding. I'm president of Prairie Hills Audubon Society. I want to thank you all for allowing us to testify, and like Gina, I also attended the, some of the committee meetings as a member of the public, and appreciate being allowed to do that and comment on that level. All right. The first, I want to begin with a little bit of education about state mining laws and tie that into the moratorium and, and this, what you have here.
Nancy?
It's, it's related.
I, I understand it's related. We, we had some of these discussions there. I just want to make sure that we're talking about specifically what's currently in this.
All right. Okay. If you want me to, to be more specific here, you have a moratorium, all right? It addresses mine, and you have existing ordinance, I, I think, zoning ordinance, I think it's on page 191 or something like that. You have a paragraph about mining, which I assume that paragraph is being tossed out and these 17 pages are being inserted in. Now, there, there is a difference in state law between sand and gravel-type mines and hard rock mining. One is under 45-6, and the other is under Title 45-6B. The regulations and the oversight and the process for these is extremely different. And one of the things we discussed in the committee, we, we discussed all these differences, and what you now have, at least as, and I'll go into this on page two, is an attempt to limit this ordinance to apply to sand and gravel, which is under South Dakota Codified Law 45-6 mines. And you will not be applying it to what's under 45-6B, which is hard rock mines, which creates an ambiguity and a unclarity, because you're getting, I assume, getting rid of your paragraph of 191. You're inserting this, you're saying that they have to get a mining permit under here, but as this is structured, this only applies to sand and gravel mines. So the question is, if you are mineral, that thing up by Rochester, excuse me if I don't remember the name right, Mineral Mountain Resources, who want to mine at the old the name right, Mineral Mountain Resources, who want to mine at the old standby site and come and apply for you, for a mine, you, they can't get that under here because this is just related to the state's mine licensing and not mine permit. So there's something that is very unclear in this, and I'm not objecting to the committee splitting those off. And I think it was a good idea to split them off, but what is unresolved and uncertain is if Mineral Mountain Resources comes to you, the application to mine, they have application now to explore at standby, they come in with an actual application to mine, how can they get a mining permit because they're not sand and gravel? Okay? So, and this is just a little editorial thing, Travis wants me to be quick. The existing state law on sand and gravel, in my opinion, is extremely inadequate. So what you are doing by creating these 17 pages is wonderful for the citizens of Pennington County. It's just that you haven't gone into hard rock mining yet, which the gentleman, Tom Henry, I think, also raised the concern. Okay, so the first thing, now I'm going to get into specific comments, okay? All right, so I'm on page two here, on this definition here. An operator shall obtain a mining permit from Pennington County to extract sand, gravel, rock, okay? This is pretty much taken verbatim from the opening clause of South Dakota Codified Law However, you have changed a few key words, which I think creates ambiguity. In the, in the state statute, between pegmatite minerals and limestone, there is a word "or" for, okay? And at the end of this clause, instead of saying "or shale," it has "or other materials used to make cement." And, and so when you have tossed out those key words from the state statute, you create a huge unclarity of what this applies to. Something like iron ore belongs in the state system under Title 45-6B, not under 45-6. Some kinds of limestone mining would be under, undermined permitting, 45-6B. So, so when you deviate from how the state law is written and rewrite this, you've created ambiguity, you've, I'm not being very clear here. The, the limes, the limestone, iron ore, sand, gypsum, or shale are supposed to be modified and clarified that those can only go to mine licensing if they're used to make cement. And the way you've rewritten this, that is no longer clear. So I'm just suggesting you look at the statute that you picked this from and check your grammar. Okay, so I'm going down now to authority, which is C, where you're citing the South Dakota Codified Law 11 to 13. I suggest your lawyer-like people, your attorneys, bless them, that you also look at South Dakota Codified Law 45-6B-4.
Where exactly? I didn't catch where you said.
South Dakota Codified Law.
No, on the paper, what page?
Oh, page two, the bottom of page two, C, authority.
Gotcha.
All right. The, the state allows counties who have zoning to pass mining ordinances. I live in Mead County, actually. I'm the president of an organization that has members that live in Pennington County. But we cannot, in Mead County, we cannot have mining ordinances because we don't have zoning. But once you have zoning, you can pass mining ordinances, and that authority is, is not in Title 11, which is on planning and zoning. It goes back to the mining title, Title 45. So, so I think you need another authority there. Okay, so I'm going to go on to here. I'm going now to page six, to agency comments, which is 2B. And this is going to mushroom into other comments and repeat something, I think it was Mr. Henry said. All comments received from any federal and/or state agency, I suggest you insert tribal in there. You will notice, I think, that now PESLA is under the jurisdiction, so trust jurisdiction of the tribes. You border Jackson and Ogallala Lakota Counties, which are under this jurisdiction of the tribes. The tribes at least have a moral claim to the Black Hills and, and a great deal of concern about many things, particularly sacred sites and whatnot. You're looking, at any rate, so I think that somebody who's a lawyer-type person should look at all of this and find a way to insert, that sometimes you need to consult with the tribes or ask for the tribal opinion, particularly if the mine theoretically could be half in Lakota County and half in Pennington County. So, so sometimes when you're going through this, consult with all federal, state, and local authorities, sometimes I think you should be inserting tribal in there, or, or inserting tribal consultation, or, you know, in different places as appropriate throughout this document. Okay, so now, now I'm going on to page five of 17, to the mine, mining permit application review. So I am also finding this, these are your reasons for you to, to ask for mitigations and all of the things you think about that drive you towards making decisions. I would also like to be included in here, something about protection or consideration for historic or cultural properties, which also gets to the tribal concern and the very violent interests that the tribes have across all of South Dakota. Okay? So then there's something else that I would like, I represent an environmental group that cares about biodiversity and wildlife, and, and I would like to see something, I mean, you're talking about public health and safety and general welfare. I would like something in there that shows a concern for biodiversity, for plants and animals, and if you want to make it very specific, you could make it threatened and endangered species. The state of South Dakota has a threatened and endangered species list, which is different than the federal threatened and endangered species list. So, you know, I would like to see some nod in here to those creatures out there in the world that are not humans and to care about them also. All right, so I'm going to flip through these real quick here, to something else. Okay, so I'm on page nine, which is the setbacks. We find the 300-foot setback, it's on, it's on page nine at the top, number C, it's about a third of the way down. H is general requirements for mining operations. One is setbacks. And so I'm going down to C. No mining operation shall be conducted within 300 feet of an existing dwelling. I would like to see a larger setback on that, than 300 feet. Speaking for Prairie Hills Audubon, we think that's inadequate. Okay, I'm going to flip forward here. Okay, so this is, I don't, I don't know if I've missed it and flipped past it.
What page?
It's about where you, you have 10 days of advertising and then five days for appeal when the, and, and the, and the people get assigned, the miners get assigned, and they post it outside the. It's about the notice, when the, when the, a public hearing notice, I guess that's page five. All right, so that's page five, I flipped past it. Okay, this, this gets back into my discussion about how there's 45-6 and 45-6B. The state of South Dakota gives us recourse and all kinds of relatively nice stuff for hard rock mines. Now, when it comes to sand and gravel, in, in my personal opinion, the state law is incredibly inadequate. For example, there's no time limit on the license, the Pete Lean, not to pick on Pete Lean, anybody could get a, a five trillion-year license to mine sand and gravel because the state law sets no time limit. But the other thing that the state law does is there is no hearing, there's no public comment period. The, the operator puts a notice in the paper that they're going to operate, and after that notice has been applied, they can start operating. So the public in Mead County and all the other counties around the state that don't have zoning have no opportunity to comment and be involved in this process. Now, bless Pennington County, it has zoning, so we will have an opportunity to comment. But this is the first and only opportunity the public has to comment on a sand and gravel mine. It's different for hard rock mining. But in sand and gravel, you're it. So you're giving us 10 days warning and then five days to appeal. So that's cumulatively 15 days. I think that's totally inadequate, and you have to realize and look at the fact, you are the only opportunity for the public to have a hearing and comment on that. So, so we Prairie Hills Audubon don't think that there's enough time with 10 days notice for everybody to figure out what's happening, gain information, show up at the hearing and make a credible presentation, and then within five days decide whether they want to appeal it. That's not enough warning. Okay, it's very nice that you're requiring letters to be sent to the neighbors that live within 300 feet, but they're also not required to get their letter till 10 days in advance. So I, we would like to see a much longer public notice, and we would like to see a longer time period for the people to decide whether they want to appeal to the commission or not. 15 days is not enough.
Okay.
All right, so, let's see, I was going to, there's another one that's related to that, which is the renewal thing, renewal. It's on page 13 of 17. We have a tremendous problem with this. As far as I, we can tell from reading this, there is no public notice when it comes up for renewal. So the assumption is, is that if you're a neighbor, an impacted person, you care enough, so you've called up planning and zoning and found out what the renewal date, and, and it's, okay, it's also not clear. It's clear that they have to apply 60 days before the thing expires, but it doesn't say when the planning director shall, or the planning staff shall issue their decision. If they get the letter 60 days in advance of expiration, can they issue their decision 10 days later? So, so what, so how is the public going to find out when it's up for renewal? Okay, so then, let's assume I'm a member of the public who wants to object to this existing mine. I'm only allowed to ask for a public hearing if I live within 300 feet of the mine. So let's say I live on a road that the trucks drive along on. Let's say I live someplace where the dust is blowing, or where the noise is hitting me, or the lights are bothering me. The people adversely impacted by the mine may live further than 300 feet. And the other thing is here is nonprofit entities like, such as Prairie Hills Audubon, you know, who, who do not have a residence, can't ask for a hearing on renewal. So I suggest that you need to change how the public can find out about renewals and how the public can object and request a hearing.
Okay.
Okay, so, I don't know if I have anything else. It doesn't look like I have right now. I did the best that I could.
Nancy, you're also welcome to send those an email so we have the notes on there.
It depends on when your deadline on. My problem is I'm so super busy, you know, depending on how long you expect me to turn this around.
All right, any questions for Nancy?
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other members of the audience like to speak on this item? Come on up, please.
Hi, Danielle Leibers with Pete Lean and Sons. I also participated on the committee, and thanks for the opportunity to do that. I had submitted some comments earlier in writing, and I won't go through all those. I'm sure you guys need a little time to digest those along with everything else you've heard here today. There were two things that had come up since I made those comments that I just wanted to address also, and I'll submit those in writing later, too. But just to kind of cover them real quick, on page 12 of 17, item H9B, wording for renewal of an old permit for clarification. It discusses how the old permits will be left in effect, but it doesn't really clarify how the renewal process will work on those old permits. If we meet the conditions and continue to meet the conditions of longstanding permits, are those permits going to be continued, or are they going to be cycled back through under the new permitting process? In committee, we had discussed that they were going to be continued under the conditions as long as they were continued to be met, but we didn't ever clarify that within the writing. So I would just ask that you guys take a look at that and make sure we clear that up. And then item H15 on, I'm not sure what page that is, sorry about that, failure to commence mining operations. It says currently that if we don't commence mining operations within two years, that we will lose that permit. My only concern with that is from the industry-wide, we don't get moving that fast sometimes when we get our permits. It takes a long time to get our permits, and then we have to get everything else together and get out there and get rolling on it. So sometimes it might take three, four, even five years. Our permits are only five years long. We'd ask that that be extended to five years to allow us to get up and operating on that site. If we don't get up and operating within five years, we would ask that, then yes, our permit expires, and if we want to come back and mine on that site, we go through the application process again and not just the renewal side of it. So that's what we would propose on that. So I'll go ahead and get those drafted up and submitted to you also, along with the rest of my comments. I would also suggest that if you're interested as the commission, as putting this back to committee, we'd be happy to sit back down on the committee and take another look at it, since there have been several comments that came in on this since it came out to you guys, too. So, however you want to handle it, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, seeing none?
None.
Come on, sir.
Good afternoon, my name's Jason Smiley. I'm here on behalf of GCC Dakota, otherwise known as the cement plant here in Rapid City. Just a couple of comments in general. You know, the cement plant largely operates based on mining limestone, and it has a significant area that is currently zoned heavy industrial, so the issues are somewhat different than the case you were talking about earlier today. And obviously, you'll consult with your legal counsel, and I don't think that really changes the landscape for anything before the commission currently, because you're changing the ordinance entirely from what was at issue in that case. Generally speaking, I guess, I just wanted to impress upon this board the consequence of kind of continued delay with this process. You know, we've had a, a moratorium in place for quite a long time now, and, you know, the ability of the cement plant to move forward and mine the property that it owns, and by the way that it purchased from the state of South Dakota in connection with the original sale, you know, what, 15 years ago or better? You know, this has been in plans for that long. And so I echo the comments of Pete Lean and Sons here today in terms of the length of time that a permit should be granted for. These companies begin planning for operations like this, you know, sometimes decades in advance. And so the idea that, you know, you have to go through a renewal process every, you know, three years as well, is very daunting to these companies, because we're talking about millions and millions and millions of dollars in investment in infrastructure. So this is a scary process to these people. This is a scary process for the employees of GCC and all the people that depend on cement being sold in this region. You know, this is the only cement plant within 350 miles, okay? The next closest cement plant is Laramie, Wyoming. So if you like roads and buildings and everything that requires cement, this is a vital part of our economy and our infrastructure and what we do here. And so this process has been a difficult one to watch, watch it play through. And their greatest concern is this, that they do everything that you require, everything that you think in terms of mitigation to be a good neighbor, and that somehow there's a determination made that, that they're not in harmony with this, because that's the standard here, not in harmony with Section 320. And so, you know, that's a concern, is, is could this body make a decision that, well, it's just not in harmony, regardless of the conditions you might impose? And I don't know that I have a solution for you necessarily, but it's, it's a big concern for, for these types of companies. for these types of companies. One housekeeping note, and I'll have a couple of comments that I can submit by email too, but one housekeeping note would be, there's a requirement to notify property owners, including contract for deed owners. This is on page 4 of 7 in section E there. I would recommend you add the language, contract for deed buyers of record, because it is possible to sell a property on a contract for deed without recording that in the register of deeds, and so you would not know who those property owners were. I'll submit my other comments by email. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Jason? All right, thank you. Any other members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this item? Come on up, sir.
Jim Dean, Dakota Stone Company, Hill City. I kind of got in on the tail end of this thing and I was invited to some meetings and I really appreciate you guys letting me jump in at the end there. Couple of concerns I have, I guess one general thing that I'd like to say is that mining companies and mining in this day and age are very responsible and actually, actually do reclaim what they mined where 50 years ago, they did not. They came in, they dug big holes, the money went to big investors and they still have it or whatever, and the holes are still there. That's not the way mining is now. The nice lady was talking about the mineral thing. When you, I have, I have small-scale mine permits through the state of South Dakota. I also have a mining license. I have pits in Custer County, Pinking County, and that we continually work with the state for service and everybody on premise. A small-scale mine permit is very involved through the state of South Dakota. They check culture stuff, they check, everything you can think of gets checked and gone through by the state of South Dakota for those permits. When you, when you hold a small-scale permit, there's been a lot of stuff done already. So, you know, the only thing that they don't really look at is zoning. And that, you know, is something that, you know, they don't really look at. And then there's just a couple of other things that I kind of came in on. What we, what we do differently than the, you know, the large-scale miners, like the blasting, there's a, there's a section in there about, you know, keeping track of your blasting and monitoring your blasting. You know, when you're, when you're blasting 500 holes at one time and setting off, you know, 2,000 to 3,000 pounds of stuff at one time, you're going to monitor, that gets monitored. The way we do, we're real small scale, we go out, we fracture the areas that we're going to work and then we dig them out. So we, we are, and you'll have to look into this, I don't know how much you've looked at, into this, but we just use a scale that tells us, you know, how many pounds of powder we can use for a distance that we are away from a building. And we use that scale, you know, when we figure it out. We're always in the same place. We, you know, we scale out at like one-tenth of the amount of explosives that, you know, would damage anything, you know, within a half a mile. So we don't do seismographic and things like that because we're so far down the scale that you can't even get a reading on seismograph from what we do, you know, at 1,000 feet away, you can't even pick up a reading, even read it. So I guess I'd like to work with the committee just a little bit more on maybe trying to rephrase some of that stuff so that we don't have to go spend $5,000 for a seismograph machine, you know, and, you know, when we can prove that we only use, we can only haul 50 pounds of explosives at one time. So that's all we use is 50 pounds at one time. So we can prove through our records and then we can show you on a map how far we are from people. I would just like to have something in there that says, okay, you know, you're exempt from doing these seismographic readings due to the fact that, you know, you're so far down the line on the vibration that it doesn't matter. And we, and we could prove, you know, that by our blast records and, and, you know, what we can haul. So I'd like to have a little bit more time to work with, with the committee on maybe trying to get that resolved and a couple of other things. And then the other thing that I, you know, the $2,000 for a new mine permit, that's a little tough. I know you guys have, you know, you're building yourself into a pretty big responsibility here to police the mining people, and I am assuming that that's where that $2,000 is, you know, coming from. But I'd like to maybe see something in there that would pertain to maybe a smaller operation that's not going to need as much police work, not, or as much, you know, looking into. You know, once a year, you know, you come out and look things around over and, you know, you send the guy out, you know. But that was the only thing that I had, but a little bit more time, I think, is needed to look these things over, so thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Jim? Seeing none.
Any questions?
Yep, but no, no one had any questions, so. Nope, we're good, thank you. Any other, any other audience members like to speak on this item? All right, any further inputs from staff?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Lloyd.
Could I ask Brittany, how long have we had a moratorium? I've lost track. Because several people mentioned that.
Sure, it's been almost a year and a half. So I believe the next round of, or it has been a year and a half and they just extended it to the end of April, I believe. So the two, I think by statute, a moratorium can only be in place for two years.
Okay. And we'll hit that, you said in April?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? All right, current, current recommendation is, let me get to it so I can see where I'm at.
Discussion.
Oh, absolutely. Page 18.
17.
17.
Based on the number of comments today, I think this needs to be put back into committee to address those comments and the new information that's being sent.
Any further discussion on that one?
I'd just like to have an understanding of how that works. I mean, does, so do all the comments go back to the committee? Committee makes recommendations and then does staff make those changes on the amendment and it comes back forward? And second part to that is, can that be done by the next meeting?
That's the question, can it be done by next meeting? I know that the lead staff on this, Brittany, will not be here and plus you're running into the tightest holiday season of the year for us. If it's your wish, we'll make it happen, but we are running tight. And I understand that the wish is to, I think you had discussed waiting for a full board here. We'd like it because that's two of the seven engineers that aren't here.
Correct. That is a good point, too. Do you, PJ, do you think the, do you think we could get the committee together and then hash out some of this other stuff if we send it out through email? Because as a committee, we talked about it through email quite a bit. Everything was emailed out to us. We could see it and then maybe have another final meeting addressing some of these specific concerns in one more meeting and then push to have the second planning meeting in January be a coming back to us before that meeting, a week out from that meeting, so we could see the, the final changes, again, addressing some of these issues.
In theory, it's a great idea, but in reality, we don't know who's going to be out of state and not available.
Right.
It's just tough.
Right, I get, I get that. But I think it gives us time to get through the holidays, because I don't think you're going to get a lot of people through the holidays with things going on. So trying to get it before the 8th of January, I don't think it's going to be possible. I mean, I guess it could potentially happen, but that's a tight window. I'm just thinking if we could get to the second.
It's, sorry.
Oh, I was just saying.
I was going to say, it's, it's tight, but if it is done and it is possible, I'd like to see it first available meeting. If we can't make that, then go to the second, but at least keep it for the 8th, just in case we can get it done.
Okay. Is that what you're, oh, go ahead, Lloyd.
So do you want a motion to continue this to the January 8th meeting?
If that's what you wish, but I don't know if that addresses.
I mean, pending the committee, you know, hearing the additional comments or acting on the additional comments.
And we can easily get it back out to committee via email. You know, it depends on what your definition of sending it back down to the committee was, Commissioner.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue this or bring it, take it back to committee and or how does that work? Continue it until the 8th to give, to give more of time for these comments to be evaluated.
I think I'm okay with that. Is that, is that clear with what we're trying to do? I mean.
Do you want to state how it was worked? I'm sorry, Commissioner, state how it's worked.
For the motion? That this item is continued to the January 8th planning commission meeting?
But the other part is to go back down the committee, get some committee comments for that 8th meeting, correct?
Right. Do you want to have all these comments sent to the committee so that they can look at them and give input on them or make any minor tweaks or corrections before it comes back to us on the 8th?
I believe based on the comments we heard today that, that might be the, what the public wants. That's my input. Like to know what the other commissioners think.
I'm okay continuing in this to the January 8th meeting and having the committee, I guess reconvene and go through these comments, but it seems to me if it's already a year and a half in it, that we probably should get this buttoned up and, and move forward. So I guess I would like to continue it to the earliest commission meeting and see if we can make that happen.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I guess one of the more important, one of the most important things is for the staff to get input from the state's attorney prior to issuing the.
On the current version, we definitely have.
Well, I mean, for, based on the, yeah.
Yeah, on the other stuff, we haven't had a chance.
Do you think that's a reasonable thing to expect by the January 8th meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And the state's attorney was at our final meeting, so she was clearing up everything. So I think that's another good reason why to, to do that. So that's your motion to continue to the 8th and send it to the, back to the committee for just a quick review of.
That would be my motion, yes.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 13.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I got a big one. Thank you, Commissioner. Item 13 is county board report. The Board of Commissioners will hear the Planning Commission's recommendations from Monday, December 4th meeting at the December 19th Board of Commissioners meeting. The Board of Commissioners were here today's Planning Commission recommendations at their January 2nd, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting. One item of note is a vacation of Platte VP 1701 for Walter Horton. This item was heard at the December 5th VOC meeting at the request of the applicant and the motion was approved, passed, and passed four to one. That's it for that item.
See, okay. That's all, so then, item 14, items from the public. Say again.
I said, our public's just about gone.
I know. Anyone else from the public here that would like to speak? I don't see anyone coming back in, so, all right, item 15?
Item 15, items from staff, so just three quick ones. Just an update on the 204G Committee, the Special Animal Keeping Regulations. That committee now exists of nine appointed members, plus Commissioner Lassiter has been appointed as chair and Commissioner DeSano of the board, who's been appointed to be on it as well, not including staff that will be involved. There were nine applicants, they accepted, they accepted all nine of them. The first meeting has been scheduled for Monday, January 15th, 2018, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. in the planning department's large conference room. And I believe the meeting after that is the 29th of January for the second meeting and then we'll go from there. Okay? Any questions on that before? Next item is of concern, well, not of concern, but more of note for seated planning commissioners. There is a new process and policy procedure for appointed, for committees, boards and et cetera, so that does fall under the Planning Commission. So I put in here with the citizen interest form and also a copy of the policy that has been drawn up and approved by the Board of Commissioners. So anybody looking for reappointment in the future, this will be the new process that you'll have to go under. Any questions? And last item is paperless packets. So as you know, staff is trying to find many ways to cut costs, save money and make things more efficient. One of those things is the option of possibly going to tablets instead of packets. This is a long way off. We could possibly even do laptops now if they, if we can find them, if you'd be interested in it, would be no cost. But grand scheme of things, what we're looking for is possibly some iPad type or Apple-type product where you would have it, kind of like the iPros where you can have the pencil and you can write and edit and then change the pages as you go. Again, that's what we're looking for down the line, but that's a lot of other departments to kind of maneuver with and also with IT. But if it is something that you are in favor of, that will go a long way for us because we are in talks with other cities and other counties on how they do their systems. We're not only looking to cut how we do the packets, but also change a lot of the systems that we have in-house as far as tracking all the documents that we have. So we have more information at our fingertips, at our desktop, instead of having to get up and go to five different offices to find information on one property. We want to try and put it all in one place. But to go back to what, when Commissioner Litten raised her hand, if anybody is interested in possibly moving to laptops now, we can look into it. Maybe there's laptops that salvage. I know we have two or three in our, in our, what we call the, back of our office.
Well, I was in favor of you just, I mean, I assumed we'd use our own equipment, right? You were going to provide the technology?
Yes.
Oh, I just assumed you, you know, that it would be our responsibility.
It's a question we can have with IT. It's, we're looking, everything would be web-based, so you basically would have to get onto the Wi-Fi here, and I don't know how IT would feel about that. I know they do have some public.
But you can do that remotely, like I do that for the school mines. I just get on their system with my device. Can't the county do that too?
In some cases, they do. It's temporary, staff not even allowed to use the Wi-Fi here.
Okay.
I would just want to check with them as far as any security issues, but it would be web-based, so anybody with web access could access it.
Right. I'm willing to try it. Does that mean we'll still have our paper package if we try the laptops here in the near future, just to see the difference? Or you try and.
You mean you want both at the same time for a little while?
Just.
That's asking a lot.
No, I like this because I can carry it with me everywhere.
I know. We're never going to get away from paper. There always will be paper available in the back, especially for public. And so, yes, there will be some, but cutting down, I mean, you know, this is not, this is an average-sized packet and, you know, we're making 12 of these.
Yeah.
And that's for one meeting and that's a lot. And if you consider the printed on both sides, some in color, it's a huge expense for staff. It's not necessarily the product, you know, or the mailing of them, it's staff time to bring them together.
What'd you say, 10 hours to?
Well, I think the last time we measured it, you checked it for doing Planning Commission and Board.
It was.
Was 10.
10 hours.
From when you got everything completed to putting it all together.
Yeah.
And we average staff time anywhere between $40 and $50 an hour if you include salary plus insurance.
Yeah, that's include the mailings, the scanning, the, yeah.
So the savings would really come in staff, in taxpayer dollars for staff time.
Labor.
Yeah, labor, thank you.
I'm definitely interested in trying it.
My only concern is, is I, I'm fine with that if the information was here and some sort of, whether it's on a tablet or a computer or something like that, but sometimes people have a tendency to get buried in, into this as opposed to maybe what's going on out there type of a thing, but I'm certainly in favor of reducing the paper if, if at all possible. So I'm in favor of trying it if you want to give it a spin.
And it's still way down the line, but, yeah.
Okay, do it next meeting.
Bring it on in.
Well, we do upload the packets to the internet anyway, so you can always ask us, access it from there.
Well, and that's how I will be accessing mine.
Yeah, so you're saying you don't want to pack it anymore?
Well, yeah.
Until you get used to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
So we can access it already online?
Yeah.
Yes, if you like, I can show you.
Every once in a while, if mine doesn't show up, that's what I'll do, and it's just as convenient. Except that I can't write on it.
You can't write, correct.
I could have technology to do that, maybe.
Yeah, it is uploaded into PDF, and some, depending on what PDF version you have.
If I had a writer or something, I could, I just don't have that.
Yeah. Commissioner Rivers, would you like me to show you how to get there?
Yeah.
Okay.
You just go to the county website.
Exactly, just go to the county website. Whoops.
And PJ, you did say that there will always be some hard copy packets, because there's always the possibility that the internet could be down, there can be digital hiccups.
Yeah, there's always going to be if you need it, until we turn to software for everything. So go to the main website, go to departments, go to planning, click on planning, go to Planning Commission, agendas, minutes, and videos.
I've done this before, sorry, I just.
That's okay.
Forgot.
It's all right. Twenty seventeen, and then the current one is always going to be up here. It replaces the previous one, so we don't keep a record of them online, except for agendas and minutes and videos, but the current packet will always appear here, and this is today's. Looking at, what is this? Two hundred and some, a hundred and some pages, I think.
Quite a few.
Yep. But other than that, thank you for the feedback, it's very, very helpful, but staff has nothing further.
All right. That takes us to item sixteen, items from the membership. I have one quick thing. Rich, you mentioned it when we started up with item number 12, and I'm all ears if there's a way that we see the next meeting of moving forward with how to address all those different aspects of changes that are going to happen. I mean, does anybody have the best way to handle that? Because there's going to be a lot of different changes. Is it something we want to say we, we accept the item as a whole? And I get it, there's going to be some changes, and we're going to, we're going to make that decision at that point in time. Or do we want to go section by section, and approve section by section? Is that kind of what you're getting at, how we want to move through it, Rich?
Well, I can just imagine Jerry sitting over there, and, and someone says something, and, and she's got to infer, you know, the meaning of that and have the notes accordingly on there. And so unless somebody's sitting here typing it up, and then that's it, and, and then that, that gets agreed to and reviewed by everybody. I mean, that's, that's the hard part for me, is, is I agree that you got to put something on paper before someone knows that they either like it or don't like it. And then we would receive comments on that, and I think that the proper thing moving forward is to send it back to committee, to absorb these comments, and, and to, and to, as a committee, come to an agreement on some of those things, and then, and then bring it forward. And then I would only see this board as fine-tuning those things, not necessarily taking comments that, that will completely rewrite the, the meaning and intent that a committee has been tasked with for a year and a half. So those are, those are just my general comments. I'm, I'm trying to understand how we can efficiently get through the, not only the comment process, but the update to that. And Jerry, I would be open to any comments you would have regarding that as well.
Well, we went through the vacation home rental ordinance. We originally adopted that in 2010. They actually went through it section by section in, at the meeting, and they got through a lot of it during a meeting, and they did have to continue it, I think like once or twice. And it, it worked, that process.
Just took it section by section and? Okay.
We did a little bit of it at each meeting. We do a few sections.
Okay.
Because you might go through almost the whole thing in one, because this wasn't, this is fairly well-written.
We spent a lot of time on it, so. Okay, I will ponder over it, too. Obviously, I'll be at the committee to see how it goes there as well, see what can be fine-tuned and address some of these concerns, and make sure that they are addressed, or if they already are addressed, and they're just addressed in a different manner and it's not seen, hopefully have answers to those questions as well, so.
Well, because it sounds like a lot of these people participated in your meetings. So you, you've already heard their concerns and.
And I know a lot of those concerns were addressed based on certain codified law from the state and things of that nature. It's just whether or not you accept that answer sometimes. But there are some concerns, some of the distances and the, and the prices also were concerns, not just of mine, but some other individuals, too, so I get that. But PJ, when you send this back, or whenever you send back an email to the committee to let them know that we'd like to have them comment on these things, that, you know, the sooner that we can get the committee together and to get it at least out to us to see it afterwards would be great, because the more time we have to see it before the eighth, we can make our notes, compare our notes with what the concerns were and see if they were addressed.
Yep.
That's the biggest concern that I have.
We're going to shoot for Friday at the earliest.
Okay. All right, I guess I'll be expecting an email today, huh?
Well, I'm not saying it'll happen, but that's what we're shooting for.
Fair enough. All right, any other items from the membership or anything else on that item? If not.
No, I just wanted to add that I'll be Skyping the next four meetings, so I'll go with Joan and do a test, so, see you in March.
All right, sounds good. If not, then that would be item seventeen adjournment. All in favor, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.